Good evening. Call the mayor and council meeting for December 2, 2013 to order. Are there any deletions or corrections of the minutes of council meeting of November 18?
I have a question on minutes. Jen, I sent an email to you about adding a statement on informing the newly elected people about not just the finance there, but the full spectrum of the, not just financial reporting, but, I got it down here, conflict of interest, financial, and it just mentioned, I think, the financial. We have three brand new people, and what I was asking is that the town attorney come in and brief them on the open meetings law, the financial requirements, you know, the disclosure laws, and gifts, and conflict of interest.
Already done.
Okay, good.
It's not the town attorney, the ethics.
Either way, it's just.
Commission has their own attorney, and it's already been arranged.
Good. And minutes just written, said the one statement, and I just wanted to correct.
And add conflict of interest.
So can we then approve the minutes as presented?
Yes.
Without addition, and also for the executive session?
Okay. There's a motion. Mebel, may the motion be a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let me go pay the bills, please.
Okay, same thing. I move that we pay the bills as presented.
And a second, and all in favor?
I'll second.
Aye. Mayor Bailey called an executive session to order at 9:00 PM, November 18, 2013, to discuss a legal issue surrounding the expanded Quaker Neck sanitary district. In attendance at the meeting were council members James Argado, Lenise Kiper, Mabel Lomford Pouts, and Moritz Stetson, along with WS Ingersoll Town Manager and Jennifer Morgan, stenographer. No formal motion to have made or passed. Meeting was adjourned at 9:15 PM. Minutes are taken and part of the record. First item on the agenda, we have to delay for a little bit because our guests aren't here yet. So we'll go right to Mr. Ingersoll.
Do you think Santa Claus is taking a nap?
Don't know.
What happened to him?
Don't know.
I had to do that. Oh, yeah. That can be in your report, there. That's more your thing. With the vacancies created by the elections, the planning commission has two vacancies, and we would begin the outreach for that now. So anybody that's here or in the audience watching our meetings, send your resumes in. I think we've already gotten a couple.
We've already gotten two.
And they'll be processed, I would think, in the new year.
Absolutely.
The Swagit model, everybody's asking me what the Swagit model is. James has found a very unique way of putting our meetings on YouTube. It's free, except for the time it takes for James to do it, which isn't very long. Is that correct?
It takes me about a minute to start the upload, and as soon as, as long as the computer doesn't get shut down overnight, it has a minute of time.
And as far as I know, except for not everybody knowing exactly where our meetings are on YouTube, which we can continue to disseminate on, what's the name of the?
I don't have access.
The what?
The public access channel?
No. It's a thing that Case does.
Oh, constant contact.
Constant contact, et cetera, to let people know where our meetings are, and it's generally always the same website, right, James?
Yeah, you can search Chestertown TV on YouTube, and the last time I did it, it was the second or third from the top.
So Chestertown TV on YouTube.
And clarity is there, the sound is better than ours. Swagit, so Swagit is a company that does, also does this, but doesn't do it free. They took our last meeting and made two free models with two different proposals. One is just putting our meetings on air, on the Internet, and with a brief description. The other one is to break it down by the agenda and put the categories almost like chapters. The council got copies of what that looked like. I don't know whether you had time to look at it, but in any case, there's a cost to it, and the more we delay, the desperate, the more desperate they get about dropping the price of it. So when they pay us, I think we should do it.
Okay.
Anyway, so that's the model, and they do do the county, and so.
What's the cost?
Well, it was in the email that I sent you. I mean, you can get pretty elaborate, and it's pretty expensive. The thing that they're offering now is to just put our meetings on the way we do it free, on YouTube, and I think the only reason to consider that would be if, for some reason, we weren't able to do it anymore on YouTube. I mean, James discovered this. It was very effective during the debates for the election, so I'd say, though, this is nice, it's a little bit prettier, but it doesn't really accomplish anything at all, more than what's happening now. So, but take a look at it. Anybody who's interested, I'll send you what Swagit sent to me, and they do do either parts of or all of the county meetings, whatever they record. But for all those people who say, hey, I don't get cable TV, it's, if you want to watch what we're doing here, and for life of me, I can't figure out why you would, but if you do, it's on the Internet. The last thing I have here is, may segue into something else. Open Meetings Compliance Board Complaint. We had a complaint lodged against the town for its waterfront study committee by O'Donnell from the Kent News. So we can't really discuss it any more than to say that the town attorney will prepare a response to the allegations, and anybody who wants copies, I'm sure it's a public document, I think the press has, have gotten copies of the formal complaint. The complaint was added to today, which I didn't know you could do, but it has been added to, and everybody's gotten a copy of that. So I don't know when, our deadline for response is 30 days, I think, but I don't know if you keep getting a stream of complaints when that clock actually starts. But, you know, the, I think, I'm not going to make any editorial comment about it.
Just leave it be.
It is what it is. And that, that, sort of segueing into this, we have, we received a letter today from John Moog, sort of explaining a little bit more about his Air Saint Rose proposal, and I'm just going to read a little part of it. Counselor already has this letter, and anyone else who wants it can. It says that "Our meetings have covered a broad scope of the community, including local officials, business, the arts, the college, the hospital, advocates of the Chesapeake River, et cetera. We have learned much and enjoyed what has been very thorough and comprehensive process. Our relationship with Air Saint Rose has been focused on having the firm translate our concepts for physical change into drawings and conceptual visualizations. We have not asked them to provide more extensive planning, because that is the job of the town and the county. As a result, their fee, quote, 'is dramatically below their first proposal. The state has been very cooperative in helping us take steps necessary for the town to receive a matching grant for half of the $16,000 quote.' While our report to the town is in draft form, it is not yet complete. We are awaiting a final meeting with Governor O'Malley, as arranged for us with the governor's subcabinet on sustainability." And there's more, just basically where they are. But I think what I read to you is he's explaining what the request was that we discussed in our last meeting, and why they need it. They want this plan to translate their concepts for physical change into drawings and conceptual visualizations.
And we brought this up at last meeting, and they're asking us for $8,000. I'm very pleased to have received Mr. Moog's letter. I think it clarifies why they need the money. I think this is a must to proceed. As you know, how many hundreds of people you all talked to, and this group cannot take all that information and put it into some cohesive ideas. This is not planning the waterfront. This is taking all their information and seeing how it could fit in the broad spectrum of Chestertown waterfront. So I would love to see someone make a motion that we approve the $8,000, that the state is matching from the department.
D-bid.
From D-bid. And so the waterfront, so this can proceed on a timely basis, and then next year, the new council members and mayor can proceed how they want to, but I would like to see us go ahead with this.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion that we come up with $8,000.
Is there's.
We are so lucky to have John Moog heading this group.
A tremendous amount of work has been done, tremendous, and I think this is a great step, and we need to keep moving. Is there a second on this?
Two seconds.
Do I need to recuse myself?
I think his second would be the one.
His second would be the one. Okay, all in favor? So we get the three ayes.
I would like to, John has done a lot of work here, and he's well-connected with the state, has worked with the state, so we couldn't ask for a better.
Contact or connection or.
Yeah, and I think what they're going to be describing, I don't have a clue, but it's going to take a lot of visuals to get it across, and what we're saying here is assisting them in preparing the visuals.
That's exactly right.
And that left out, as a postscript, he also says, "To release our report prior to that meeting would be premature, since we believe it is incumbent upon us to not only share our recommendations, but to specify ways to fund those recommendations." That's what his trip to see O'Malley and all is, and I would say that to articulate it through these visualizations is pretty important.
Well, we're going to be looking for a great deal of funding, and you can't get funding unless you start with plans that they can look at and understand, and there'll be huge amount of planning down the road, because this is just dipping our second toe in the water. So, thank you, council, I think this is a good move forward, and then next year, the next group can move along with that.
That's end of my report.
This is for Resolution 03, 2013, Town of Chestertown establishing the Green Team as a committee for the Town of Chestertown. Whereas the Green Team has been meeting over several years informally in an attempt to make Chestertown a green town, and whereas the Green Team has now formed a mission statement and would like to be recognized as a formal commission in accordance with Resolution 20-2013, and whereas the Green Team, a community group, promotes careful stewardship, research, and wise use of natural economic resources, with the goal of achieving an improved quality of life for the community and future generations through sustainable initiatives. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and council of Chestertown express their approval of the Green Team Committee.
The mission statement, have they made that public yet, or?
Yeah, we read it last meeting.
You had a one-sentence mission statement.
Yeah, it's just a simple, clean, kind of, whereas the Green Team, a community group, it was that kind of thing. Is, can there be a motion to approve the Green Team as a committee for the Town of Chestertown?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Any other questions? All in favor?
And they understand that now they'll have to have minutes.
Minutes, yes.
Yeah, because I think this is the right way to go. The next council can modify or change it, it will, because, but at least it puts them on record of being a formal committee at this point in time.
Yes. We have, on the thing of green and this, that, and the other, I received a newspaper article today from someone in town who said that our recycling is a joke, why don't we do it right? And this is about Howard County starting a compost collection. I would love to see us do a compost collection, but the problem we have, and continue to have for a while, is there's no place to take the compost. That has to be established. It doesn't do us any good to haul it to Delaware or the western shore right now. You know, this is maybe a possibility eventually, if we ever get there, for Wallace Henry, if we ever let them, the new group decide, go to one, once a week, garbage pickup. But to tell this person, you know, we would love to compost, but there is no place to take it. Someday that will work, and there are some interesting things happening around the country. For instance, New York State, Florida, and several other big places now are going to, instead of the clam shells used in schools, trays, they're going to a material that's compostable, even though it's more expensive initially, because they're ordering, like the state of New York and the state of Florida, the costs are coming under. So a lot of things are changing in the compost world, and this is something that I know our Green Team will stay on top of. So, and we also, starting in January or February, hopefully, we will go to dual recycling, which means it's your paper and cardboard in one bin, and everything else in another bin. Oh, that isn't who the people, who I thought, I mean, you're welcome, we were looking for Mr. and Mrs. Claus.
No, that's not who we're expecting.
It's not, you're not Mr. and Mrs. Claus, are you? So whoever sent this to me, we will always proceed and do the best we can.
There's no reason why they can't start a little neighborhood compost.
Yeah, you know, if you want to do that, I mean, I compost.
Yeah, you know, it's.
It's not hard, God knows it's not hard.
The college composting. You paid $10, you got a bin, and you picked it up from the loading dock around, well, I don't know anything about, at the dining services, at the loading dock, and you just paid one $10 fee, and there were bins, containers, and they throw all their vegetable scraps and everything in it, and you just go and pick up the bin. I don't know how.
They were selling it, huh?
Well, no, you just paid a $1, I mean, one time, $10, and that might have covered, you know, the container.
Wow.
Well, in all these places that they're joining us in Florida, there's such a huge debate, demand for compost material.
We've got them out here in the lobby, with the compost.
You know, people want it because of, they need that mulch and everything else for crops. So there is a market for it, we just have to find a place to take it. But the Green Team will work on it.
At least half the town has places in their yards where they could have compost.
I have a compost.
Yeah, you do.
It's not hard to do. I think something the team can do is try to do a big program on composting and show more people how to.
We have police in Fox, back of Foxland Manor, where they take all the.
Huge compost.
Yeah.
We give it away, but half the time, we have trouble finding enough sources to give it away to.
Yeah. Look, since we're in the nature section, Ernie Herron Point is here tonight. Good evening, Ernie, how are you?
Fine.
He had a lovely suggestion, if you want to come up, and I was quite pleased. It's kind of in the way we like to think.
Thank you. My name's Ernie Marr, I'm from Herron Point, but I'm speaking for just myself and maybe my wife, and we live right next door to the Margot Bailey Park, and just have enjoyed it, and taken our big dog walking in that park for two years we've been here. And I happen to be interested in birds as well, and it's often crossed my mind that wouldn't this be a nice place for bluebirds to have nesting boxes? But they do need some trees. Then I read, trees are coming as well, and I thought it was time to at least let you folks know that it would be, I think, an asset to the park, and asset to the birds, and to visitors, to see these beautiful bluebirds on the grounds. They're fairly territorial, and you don't put 10 or 15 boxes in at once and expect them to come nest in there. I'm thinking of maybe four boxes, and I'd be happy, I'm not a pole digger, but I'd be happy, once the boxes got in, to monitor them, and make sure that snakes, and raccoons, and other creatures don't take over the boxes. The bluebirds start laying eggs first of April, so this would be something to consider soon, rather than later, and there's a specific-sized box and a specific hole that allows bluebirds to get in, but not starlings and crows and whatnot, and I'd be happy to consult if it seems like something you folks are interested in. I don't think it's a big project, but I think it's one that would add to the, just the ambiance of our community. That's all.
I think it's a great, I love the idea of adding other places that, they did some bluebird boxes back, God, this is years ago, Bill, Susan, remember Bill and Shirley, Susan? They put bluebird boxes back in Radcliffe area. Where do you get the right bluebird boxes? Can you?
One place would be right across the.
Kink Town.
Farm and Country Store, and they have the boxes, and you need a box, a pole, a predator guard, and some manpower.
And some manpower. Well, I think, I love the idea, obviously, it's going to be in that park.
Is there a woodworking shop left at the high school?
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
Well, that's all, we'll check.
You know, whether it's a formal or informal.
I thought Ernie was on the verge of donating for a second. But he got close, he got close.
Well, you can always check and see if, Herron Point used to have a woodworking group, and they made something years ago, but let's.
And the senior groups, I think there's a possibility, we could buy the materials, and if they can provide the labor of putting them together to your specs, I think it would be a great idea.
You can buy a box kit that's even cheaper, that's not already made, someone that's.
Put it the other.
I did talk Herron Point colleagues into putting in three specific bluebird boxes in the area behind the cottages, and last year, we had one empty box, one with bluebirds, and one with tree swallows, which are also nice little birds.
Oh, they're lovely.
I think you got a volunteer in the back bag.
Gibson, he's going to donate.
I just coincidentally happened to have three boxes, and I've been looking for home for them.
Fantastic.
I knew you.
Yay, Gibson.
Gibson, is that why you came here tonight?
It's so weird. Been tripping our own.
Can you bring them in, and then we can get whatever, the poles and everything else that we would need for them? That's three, that's exciting.
Ernie, can you tell us where you think they would be best?
You consult with Bill?
Sure.
Location of them.
Yeah. One's easy, it's the little rain garden, the Rowan Road Rain Garden.
Yeah.
That already has shrubbery around, and that could have one in there tomorrow, if we had it.
Good.
Oh, fantastic. We've got three coming, and we'll find a fourth. Ernie, thank you. Gibson, thank you. Nancy.
Wasn't there someone who went to Fountain Park, and people were building bluebird boxes with the children?
I don't remember, there's something about bluebird boxes.
We have a painted birdhouse at home that I can't remem, I thought, they have something with Easter neck island comes in, and they, the kids build something.
Chesapeake Bay Foundation.
Is that what it is?
They get wood duck boxes away. We'll check.
We'll check. Well, we've got three coming in, thank you, Gibson, and we can, we can get the poles and whatever else is needed. I think that's.
This sounds like something that the Kent County Bird Club should be part of, and we certainly have some property available to you out of the special funds.
Would you check, Gail?
That would pay for poles and predator guards if somebody makes the boxes.
Fantastic.
We have a meeting next Tuesday night.
I know Bob.
Love it.
Bob's trying not to raise his hand. I know, he's going to build them in 10 minutes. Don't raise your hands.
Yes, he could build one box.
Oh, I know, we could build several.
I know. Gail, if you would let us know, so we can get the stuff for four.
Just, once you get the boxes, we need the poles, you need the predator guards definitely, or the snakes will take every baby bird. If Ernie needs extra help, we'll be at Herron Point next Tuesday night, if you want to come to the meeting.
I'll be there.
And talk to Walter and Nancy about good locations and stuff, they're our experts. Ford and Price, or Ford Park. And one of them could be an expert.
Yeah, with Floyd, it takes an hour to, you know, because you're going to get a long explanation of, okay.
So, you're, this is the, what is this?
Kent County Bird Club, we meet at Herron Point every second Tuesday of the month, except for January, February.
And what time at Herron Point?
Can you get us an Osprey nest for a horse Elaine box?
You've got to pay for that yourself.
Okay.
Sorry about that. You've got to make it my board, put it up yourself. What time's your meeting?
You gotta put one up.
7:30.
Cynthia Saunders keeps asking for one.
Thank you.
But I'll talk, the committee won't be there, so I will ask.
Fantastic, Ernie.
You can take the funds for it out of the special.
It's a bluebird night.
What a perfect night. You came, Gibson came, and Gail was here. Yay.
There must be some reason Dave Sobers just walked in, he must have bluebird boxes too.
We passed the committee thing, so that's, yeah, so that's a go.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I'm so excited. That's just, that's a wonderful night. Okay, my only last thing is, when I was thinking about the police stations committee, this is not meant to be rude to anybody, but with the new group coming in, I really think they should make some decisions concerning this whole thing, if they want to keep going, if they want to change, if they want to expand it. So let's let them make the decision in January, would that be all right for you guys, unless you've already met with your group?
We're going to meet, in fact, I was putting the list together again today, and emails should be going out tonight to see about getting people, setting a time up either for the end of this week or the beginning of this week for our first meeting.
Okay, but I really want them involved, since that is going to be there.
Well, I think with the, they are a formal committee, they will be involved, because minutes will have to be taken, they'll be presented to the, at least once a month to the mayor and council.
Paul Showalter's going to be on.
What are they called? What do we call them? It's a study group, isn't it?
Study group.
You said committee.
I said committee, group, doesn't matter, those words are interchangeable in the final document. Committee, what do you call them, you know, because all they can do is make a suggestion.
It's not set in stone.
No, it's a study group, it's not, it's not the same as committee.
I mean, you can't, you can't send everybody home that's involved in doing something.
Well, no one, no one started yet, that was my point. No one has started.
We made our recommendations.
No one has started meetings yet, and no one had been notified, and if something had been going, of course, you'd leave it be. I just don't want to tread on the toes of people coming in.
Well, let's just leave the old with the new and keep on, keep your committee.
There's got to be some continuity.
These people were asked to volunteer, they ought to be able to continue.
Just thought I'd bring it up.
It's all good.
That's all I have. Word reports, Mabel?
Yeah, I have done some pictures, so that these can be passed on to the rest, these are things that have not been resolved and need to be, and so you can number your own and make a note, because I didn't have time. We did a lot of volunteer work over Thanksgiving to keep the town busy and happy and all that, so had to take costumes back today, and so with that in mind, anyway, the first picture is Mount Vernon Avenue, they've asked for a one-way era on the road.
Bill's already talked to JR about it.
I asked JR to paint it.
Okay, that's good, and he may have talked to everybody that's going on here, but this is what I'm leaving to be completed. I've asked a number of times for the college to look into removing these houses and providing parking space for Washington College students, instead of filling up all of College Avenue, and I think in the future it can be done.
Joe, would you kind of get us some direction on that?
There's three houses. They're boarded, boarded up houses, Joe, you know what they are.
I don't, you can't, Mabel, we can't say the parking could go there.
What'd you say? They would have to have a parking plan submitted to.
Well, we got to have some parking somewhere.
I'm not saying we shouldn't.
I'm passing this on to be.
Joe's going to go check on this one.
If it takes another 10 years, I don't care, but these are things that need to be done. This right away behind the properties, the 600 block of High Street, is the third page. It belongs to High Street, it does not belong to Coward Street, and Coward Street, I didn't take a picture of, but they've asked for residential parking, two cars to a house, I don't even know how they'll get two in there, but they're being chased out by visitors taking over their spaces, and they have to go all the way up to Bethel Church, and then that, in the school area and park, and carry their groceries home, so they've asked, these are things that have been brought to my attention most recently. I hate to tread on anybody's toes, but something has to be done out at Edge of Town Trailer Park. We're in violation of all rules out there, a danger to the children with the, the trailer that burned has never been cleared out, and I know that there's, it's been dumped off on a private owner, but the owner of that trailer park has got to step in and clean the park up, and. the park up, and however they get their money back is their problem. And the next picture's some of the same thing, and I was out there today, and the children, children playing in that debris is just, is just unacceptable.
Jim, would you ask Case to go out and take a look at that too?
And the next one, we need Case to look at, it's a Flatland Road property, and it's right next to, it's next to a beautiful property, and this, this is a home that was, I'm trying to think their name, it started with M.C.
McCovin.
McCovin. So, that's, that's the next place, that definitely has to be cleaned up. And the next picture is part of the same thing. I've talked about this many times, so I made pictures so that some of you, if you're not familiar with all this, because it's so bad that you probably wouldn't even want to go near it. Page eight is the same thing, there's the pipe I told you about across the driveway, that pipe was put in, pulled out there after, after I went up on that property during my politicking days. And 500 blocks of High Street, if you look through this left window, you will see the outside world. There is nothing here but a shell. I'm not sure that that's the way a neighbor should have to live.
Look, I want Case to check into that too, see what ownership that we can do.
So, that's...
To get that moving along.
That's my report.
He's been, he's been working on all these things, except for the, the arrow in the street.
Well, we need to, I know it's a slow process.
The McCovin thing's up on a hill, and I don't think it gets noticed as much as you notice it, so I'd have to say we haven't done, done much of that.
We really wouldn't notice it at all, but since we have so much going on about Flatland Road, and there is such an increase of people walking to the store at night, that's, that's a dangerous...
Yeah, this is...
It's just sitting there waiting for something to happen, because I can't figure out if somebody's living in there.
Do you notice your streetlights are on, Mabel?
Pardon?
Notice your streetlights are on?
Yes, and thank you very much, Mr. Engersol, they are on today.
That's not on this list, is it?
You want a gold star? They should have never been off.
It's hard to make sure all lights are on at the same time.
Oh, and speaking of lights, what is our time line for putting Christmas lights on? Because they weren't on early last night after dark, and then...
They're supposed to go on at dark, 5:00 or so.
Well, they weren't on until at least 7:00, maybe later.
I'm sure they'll...
I don't know, is the police department turning them on?
They turn them on, they turn them off.
Well, I would think when people are coming home from work, it's such a delight to drive into town and see, see the Christmas lights, so maybe they could be on earlier. But thank you, Bill, I always thank you for...
The lights should have never gone out in the first place, right? Like, you're welcome.
Well, I, I did, I followed you up and went to Baldwin's and asked them if...
I know you did, they called.
I'm sure they did. And I said, is there ever a chance of having lights in 600 block of High Street? I knew they weren't going to do it last week.
Both were unique, both were unique problems, and it turns out the second batch has a short in one of the lights, so that you see the top of the light's been taken off today.
Okay.
Okay, we spend a lot, we got, we got a grant for these things, but we spent a lot of money in those.
Yeah.
They do look good.
They're, they're a great help, really.
I'm going to switch to townwide announcement for...
Okay, sure.
I talked about the briefing, the other thing is, Bill, this is the first time we have three brand-new council people on board. I think a packet of all the stuff we've discussed in the last six months, and there's been a boatload of stuff that needs to go out to these people, so they could do the research, everything from the hospital to some of the other stuff.
I've been giving them some, many items, yeah.
Okay, good, because I just think it's essential that they hit the, hit the ground running, because it's, it's...
I didn't get no stinking packet when I got elected.
I didn't either.
And I was dead.
You got the biggest packet we ever gave out, it was an inch and a half thick.
It was a budget.
I'm just kidding.
But this is, no, we, we've got three brand-new people.
It just got a lot more complicated.
Well, do you think, do you think that somebody would run for office and not, not be keeping up with us prior to the election?
But a lot of this stuff has been an executive session, there's been other stuff...
Well, you don't give that out anyway.
Well, now, it's, it has to go out to the, they're the new executives.
Doesn't have to. Not, not by, uh-uh, not by our standards.
Well, I think it's...
Doesn't have to go anywhere.
Anyway, I think they have to be informed, because...
Well, I've been giving them information that, that is pertinent, that we have on the hospital, the information I could give on Quirrenick Road, Flatland Road.
We've got the, we've got the thing on the recycling and once, once a week trash collection.
They have that.
You know, all those items, there's a series of, I've been going through my, my, my book, and it just, it keeps popping up stuff that they should have some background on.
Okay, right. David will get copies for all of them, David Sobers will get copies for all the...
Well, they get, once they get elected, we start sending them all the emails we send to you.
Right, but I mean...
So, and also different, I guess elected officials have different aptitudes for what they want to do prior to going to the hospital.
You know, like, when you get, when you take a state job, the first four days is...
Bring the state.
You get all the background of what you...
It's in the state.
It is, it's not the state, it's the idea that they get fully briefed about what's going on. That's it.
Brian disseminating information.
Really? Don't you think the town manager will see that these people are up?
I, it's, we've never had to go there. Never, I'm not going to go there, okay.
Okay, maybe Jim, yes, we will get the stuff.
Back to the ward, okay.
One, one more thing about the ward, may I interrupt a minute? I forgot about the trees, the beautiful trees, they're up. They've been planted, the trees have been planted, here and there. You didn't, you didn't know that.
Well, we haven't planted all the trees in the, in the Margaritaville Park yet.
That's okay.
Okay.
We've got them in my board, that's all that matters.
Right.
In the bump outs, we've got them in the bump outs.
The bump outs, yeah.
Oh, yeah, they look good, they've been...
The segment of Kent Street between Philosopher's Terrace and Richard Drive, right by the water park area.
Yes.
Okay, has been a pedestrian nightmare for years. It is being exacerbated because of the middle school, and the kids are walking, going out, they're walking on that inside curve, and the smaller kids are disappearing, even though we cut back the weeds and everything, they're disappearing in the blind curve there. And we've either got to move them across, something has to be done, we could talk about it for all we want, but something has to be done to get the people on the other side of the street walking, and perhaps a sidewalk, which is going to be difficult to put in.
Who don't walk on, I'm amazed that people don't walk on sidewalks.
Well, there's no sidewalk there.
I am stunned when I drive up Calvert Street, and everybody's walking middle street.
Well, there's not, there's no sidewalk there.
Very difficult to put a sidewalk in.
But the other day I was going out, and there were two young kids disappeared totally, and they were walking along the side, they weren't, they weren't up against the curve, but they disappeared totally in the dusk, and, because they just had run at the curve, and the trees and stuff were behind them, and they were, they were invisible.
Chief, would you just look at that, would you look at that stretch?
I talked to some of the neighbors on that side of the street about sidewalk, by the way, this just came up in the past before.
It's tough to put in.
I think we can get it past our water plant, and that'll get it, if we can get it around the bend, then I think we will be able to safely walk.
They're going to walk, they walk on the streets.
On the street, I'm just don't put a sidewalk in.
I've seen places where, whether they pay attention to signs or not, but walk the other side of the street.
Sure, sure.
Okay, that's, that's a, that's a disaster waiting to happen. Okay, that's it.
Okay, Linda.
Okay, First Friday is this Friday, and did you see Nancy's, is she behind?
She's back there.
Wait, oh, there you are. Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't see you, Nancy. Kristin Owen would like help putting luminaries out, and I think it was at 4:45, if anybody would like to help put luminaries out, Kristin Owen works at Chesapeake Bank, and so I think it's supposed to be a really big First Friday, and we took care of the reading count challenge, because you were going to give...
Two pizzas.
Two pizzas, for certificates for the winners, the two winners. And Chief, thank you very much, and the officers for directing traffic and keeping traffic off of High Street Friday night when Santa Claus got here, and Saturday morning during the parade. And I think that's about, it was really nice, Friday night and Saturday morning. Oh, and then we had a reception for Anna at Scotty's, I mean, Anna at JR's Friday night, and the band came in and played, you were there.
Yeah.
I was up in New York.
It was a lot of fun.
Good.
She was really excited.
But she was.
That was nice.
Never seen a full band walk into a bar, but that's pretty impressive.
It was, it was.
They shut the door in the back room with the whole band inside playing.
Woo. Yeah.
They played, they played when it was Andy's every year for, for years, they played, well, we used to go in the Episcopal church and play there, and now they're not open for some, for whatever reason on that Friday night.
It's just the way they marched through all the customers to the back, I mean, all the customers were looking up.
If somebody's intoxicated, they'd go home and try to figure out what, just what took place.
It was fun. It was a good time.
Okay.
That's it.
We have Gibson, anything? Okay, Tita, William, you're just here for a visit?
Just visiting.
Okay, so we, good to have you, I'll see you this weekend. And anything from anybody out there?
Nancy. What are you going to do about Santa, are you going to read the proclamation anyway?
Well, Santa's not, no, we're going to hang on to it, maybe we'll see Santa next time.
He's already for the next meeting.
Yeah, so we'll hang on to it.
He's very busy this time of year.
Yes, he's very busy.
What's he doing?
Maybe John will have to leave it in her chimney. Do we have a chimney here?
Sometimes the Santa happy hours last too long. Santa, you can't go anywhere like this.
So, we'll, we'll hang on to this. Okay, is there, oh, maybe we need to sign this one, we'll save the rest for Marty. Is there a motion to return?
I have a question.
Yes.
With the, the concept drawings for the marinas...
These are not concept drawings, are they?
Well, the $16,000 for the, for the marina.
Waterfront.
Waterfront complex. Why is the college not paying half of the $8,000?
Well, this is the whole thing, okay, you can look at it this way, they found half the money for us, that team, and I'm not going to worry about it.[1732.12]